The security, what, why we are here? Now, as I said, we're going to cover some of the domains of C I S S P. Obviously, we're not going to get really detailed into those domains, but I'm going to give you an overview of what, you know, these domains all about and, what you can implement or learn and implement in your organization or your environment. So the modules that we're going to talk about today is security and risk management, asset security, communications and network security, security assessment and testing and identity and access management. We're going to spend a little bit more time on identity and access managements than any other modules, because there are so much to cover in I M. But again, this is, keep in mind, this is like a thirty thousand foot overview of these domains. Now, without further ado, let's go ahead and start as Jesse mentioned, or we try to break it every hour or maybe just before the hour or a little bit after the hour to have a little bit of break between the sessions. So you can walk around a little bit in the stretch. So let's talk about security and risk management now. Interesting things here, a couple of months ago, I was teaching a class and I use CIA. And the very first thing that people thought it was Central Intelligence Agency, like agents wearing earpieces and hidden microphones and, you know, running around. And then when I'd start talking about CIA Triad, one of the guys said, what's, what's that? Is it the TV show Cross Between Homeland and Jackie Chan movie? Which was pretty funny. Now, obviously CIA Triad is a model that designed to guide an organization's policies on information security. The information security basically seeks to protect three principles when it comes to it. It's confidentiality, integrity and availability. Now compromising any of these one elements or any of these elements of CIA Triad can compromise the data security. Now confidentiality, integrity and availability make up what known as a CIA Triad, as I mentioned a few minutes ago or a few seconds ago. The CIA Triad is a security model that helps organizations basically stay focused on the important aspects of maintaining a secure environment. Now, in the real world, a sign, if you put a sign that says do not enter, may work to keep some people away from entering your environment or your property. But if you really want to restrict people from entering into your property and basically keep them away from, you know, malicious intentions, you need to lock those doors, you need to have maybe several doors, you know, all lock, may have to have security guards, barbed wire, CCTV or even a couple of ducks. It depends on what you're trying to protect. So again, when it comes to protecting data or your environment, you have at a higher level, which is the, you can use access control, like locked doors, as I said. And when it comes to environment, information security is folder permissions to factor authentication. And then at the lower level, we can use encryption, you know, to protect data at rest or hashing to protect data at motion. And physical security for data in use, obviously. And you can even use default deny configuration so that unless somebody has a specific permission or authorization, they won't be able to access any of these data. So when it comes to confidentiality, there are certain terms that we need to know. And there are a number of related concepts that are used when discussing the CIA triangle. So these are some of the terms associated with confidentiality, you know, like sensitivity and discretion critically, concealment, secrecy, privacy, seclusion and isolation. So any of these terms, obviously, they have a definition when it comes to confidentiality. Now, the second part of the CIA Triad is integrity. You know, just a few minutes ago, I was talking about encryption, like encryption helps ensure the integrity of data at rest. But it's not the best option when we have data in motion. So instead, we use hashing, you know, normally. Hashing a data, basically assign a data, assign that data in numeric value, which is calculated at the source before the transfer and then again by the recipient after the transfer. So a match proves that that data is good and confirms the integrity of that data. Now, as well as controlling access to the data, your security measures should also limit what people can do with that data. For instance, the ability to copy, move or alter data should be restricted because we want to make sure that the data is being accessed only by authorized users, not, you know, people that they don't have permission or they're not authorized. So obviously, other than that, then the integrity is at the door. Now, again, here are concepts and terms related to integrity. Integrity also can refer to both information and systems. Resources such as information and systems generally cannot maintain their integrity if their confidentiality is also, is not also protected. So as I said earlier, every aspects of the CIA Triad, they have to be there for us to have a good security in place. So you can see the terms of integrity terms on the screen. Again, they all have some kind of, you know, definition. But this is what we use when we talk about integrity. Now, the last part of the CIA Triad is availability. You know, of course, in doing all of this thing that we're talking about, we have to make sure that we're not over complicating things and we're not over complicating access to those datas. This is where the availability comes. You know, complicating security measures can create a bottleneck to access the system, especially if the system is not properly maintained or the problem is not immediately fixed. So there are a number of protocols to ensure the system availability. Obviously, some of those protocols ensuring that we have appropriate bandwidth, we have backup, we have disaster recovery redundancy and so on. There are so many others. Now, just for, I'll give you an example, let's talk about like online banking. You know, we know that the website, that the banking system has to be very secure. But at the same time, it has to be easy enough for average user when they sit in front of the computer or they pick up their smartphone and they log in to be able to use all the functions or all the services that are available to them. So we want to make sure the security is there, but at the same time, we don't want to over complicate things. So to ensure high availability of our services and data, we use techniques like failover clustering, as I said, site resiliency, automatic failover, load balancey, redundancy of hardware and software components, fault tolerance. And there are a few other things that we can use to make sure that our data is available. So protecting the confidentiality of data is like cybersecurity one on one. It forms the basis of many people's security strategy. Data integrity is essential to the legitimacy of the data. So if you can trust the data is unmodified, what's the point of keeping it, you know? And maintaining availability is critical to having a functional relationship with that data. So again, the CIA Triad makes a good team, but they cannot work alone. They all have to be in place in order to have a secure environment. Now, when it comes to evaluating and applying our security governance principles, you know, to establish a security governance principles, we have to adapt the framework that something like from National Institute of Standards and Technology like Nest or some other companies. So those are the type of frameworks that has been tested and it seems to be working fine with different organization. Again, Nest is one of them, there are some other ones out there. But the purpose of this security frameworks is that they have to closely tied to the organization's mission and objectives. Basically, enabling the business to complete its objectives and advance the mission while securing their environment based on the risk tolerance. For example, a car manufacturer, the security framework has to be the way that the expansion of automation is available or it's doable. So if the security framework is not supporting automation, then that security framework is not sufficient for that manufacturer, is not aligned with their mission and objectives. Now, we have to be aware of the risks in acquisition, especially when it comes to, you know, different IT environments, because we may be walking into an IT environment that it's unknown. So we need to do due diligence, that's critical. And when it comes to organization, organizational role and responsibility, always, obviously, there are multiple roles to consider. Management has a responsibility to keep the business running and to maximize profits and shareholder values. The security architect or security engineer has responsibility to understand the organization's business need, the existing IT environment and the current state of security and vulnerability, as well as to think through strategies, you know, improvement, configuration, countermeasures that could maximize security and minimize the risk. And then the last part of the principle is security control framework. A control framework helps ensuring that your organization is covering all the bases around securing that environment. There are many frameworks to choose from, as I said, and a minute ago, control objectives of information technology, COBIT is one of them and the ISO twenty seven thousand series. So these are all frameworks that, you know, can, can an organization consider. Now, keep in mind, all these frameworks fall into four different categories. Preventive, deterrent, detective and corrective. These are the categories that all these frameworks fall into. So after you establish and document a framework for governance, then you need to have a security awareness training and to bring everybody together and make sure everybody has the same idea and they also follow the same principles. So all the new hires, they should be completing some kind of security awareness training when they come on board and then existing employees, they need to go through this training on a regular basis. Normally, most companies that require annually to get trained again. So that's as far as the security and risk management and overview of a CIA Triad. Now, let's talk about risk management here. So how we're going to do this? First, let's talk about risk, what's the risk? So risk is, is the likelihood that a threat will exploit their weakness and cause loss. That's the definition of risk. And it's, most of the time is shown as the equation that risk equals to threat times vulnerability times consequence. Now, a big part of the risk analysis is to understand the vulnerabilities and the threats that lead to risk. You know, a vulnerability is defined as any weakness in a system or process that could lead to harm. A threat is a potential danger caused by exploiting vulnerabilities. And a threat agent is the agent that will expose the vulnerability and cause the harm. Now, the consequence is the resulting harm that the organization could receive. So another factor to consider is that different assets have different vulnerabilities and threats. For example, a warehouse will have significantly different vulnerabilities than in intellectual property or IP application. So different assets, different vulnerabilities. Now, risk management involves three primary steps. You know, before I get to that, we've got to, we've got to understand that threats and vulnerabilities are linked. A threat such as a hacker taking over your computer is possible when a vulnerability such as an unpatched computer is present. Now, that's, that's a known threat, obviously, but we do have some unknown threats, some threats that exist that we don't know, like a hacker who accesses a system because they know a bug in the system and we don't know and they have access to our computer and they compromised their system. So that's an unknown threat. So again, the risk management involves three primary steps. We want to identify threats and vulnerability, obviously. We want to assess the risk, which is our risk assessment, and then we want to mitigate that risk. So when it comes to assessing the risk, you know, we have a risk when we have a threat and vulnerability. In those cases, you need to figure out the chances of the threat exploiting the vulnerability and the consequences if that does happen. Now, and then we have to be obviously familiar with these approaches. The very first approach, we're talking about the quality. So this method basically uses a risk analysis that assigns a risk value such as low, medium or high. For example, the likelihood is rare and the consequences are low, then the risk is low. But if the likelihood is almost certain and the consequences are major, then the risk is extreme. Now, the second method is quantity, as we're talking about quantity here, the method is more objective than the qualitative method. So it uses basically the dollar or other metrics to qualify or quantify the risk. And then we got the hybrid, which is a mix of both of the first and second methods. It's basically easily, it can assign the dollar amount if you do. If, if you can, if you cannot, then you don't, then you, you know, look at it as a quality. Now, this can often provide a good balance between the quality and quantity when it comes to risk assessment. Now, there are four types of risk mitigation strategy that we need to look at. You know, the first one is avoiding, you know, avoid in general, we want to avoid all the risk. So risk should be avoided that involve a high probability impact for both financial loss and damages. Then with the second one is transfer. Risk that may have a low probability for taking place, but would have a large financial impact should be mitigated by share or sharing or transferring it. For example, buying an insurance or forming a partnership or outsourcing. The third strategy is accepting it. When some risk that expenses, for some risk, you know, the expenses involved in mitigation, it's a lot higher than the risk itself or damages that it can cause. So in those type of situation, we might just accept that risk. And then the fourth strategy is going to be limiting. This is the most common mitigation strategy when it comes to risk limitation. Businesses normally take some type of action to address perceived risk and regulate basically their exposure. Risk limitation usually employs some risk acceptance and some risk avoidance. So again, when it comes to risk mitigation, we need to look at four strategies. Avoid, transfer, accept and limit based on, obviously, the financial losses and the damages and the work that's going to be involved in those strategies. Now, we need to be able to determine and develop controls to eliminate or reduce risks. Now, these controls obviously must be economic and provide expected level of protection. In other words, if the control should not cost more than the expected loss, you know, caused by a threat or vulnerability. So when we decide to mitigate the risk, the risk assessment process help us to select and apply the proper controls based on both the probable impact of the disaster and the cost of implementing the controls. So for example, the selection criteria is cost effectiveness, risk reduction and practically, you know, cost effectiveness. Again, if we know that a risk is going to cost us about four hundred thousand dollars annually, but we have to spend five hundred thousand dollars annually to eliminate that risk, this is inactive, is not effective. So, but spending up to four hundred thousand dollars a year to eliminate or limit that risk, that might be something to consider. Now, when it comes to risk reduction, again, the same thing, control must actually reduce the risk, you know? We can't just use a controller or use a solutions because it's interesting, it's pretty or, or expensive or just something came out and we all want to have it. We have to make sure that that control or that solution that we use, it's going to reduce our risk. One of the things that a lot of companies, organizations, they look is the cost, you know? So if the risk is related to an unauthorized individual access to a secure facility that uses a control as, that's very inexpensive, you know, a motion detection system that's very inexpensive and it fails fifty percent of the time, it's not a valid risk reduction defense measure. So that's not a good way of controlling that risk. And then the last part is practicality, basically it has to be practical. You know, we can't just create stuff or try to do something that is not practical. A good example I can give you, let's say that you have a building that is in a flood zone and you come and build a wall around it because you want to keep that flood away. But then, once you build a wall, then you realize that this wall is not going to hold certain water pressure when the water comes down or, or, you know, it's just limiting the access of everybody getting in and out of that building. So it's not practical, we have to look at the practical aspects of it. Now, once you have met the three big criteria or select the right criteria, then you have additional details to consider. Now, these details, it can be, you know, if this solution is, can be audited, you know, if this control can, is from a trusted source, obviously. Is it reliable? Is it easy to use? Is it automated? You know, there are certain other details that we need to consider when we want to implement some criteria or controls when it comes to eliminating or reducing risks. So let's talk about asset security here. Now, asset security falls into the second domain of C I S S P. If you remember when I showed the domains earlier and it makes up twelve percent of the questions for the exam. So if you decide to go for C I S S P training and an exam, keep that in mind that this is one of the, you know, domains that you're going to have quite a few questions about. So by definition, assets is anything that can be important to the organization. That can be a part, that can be partners, that can be employees, facilities, equipments, information. And normally, information is the most important assets to any company, company or organization and is valuable to every information system these days. Now, to improve security, you need to identify both your data and your physical assets and classify according to their importance, obviously, and sensitivity. And, you know, data classification and asset classification are two type of classification we're going to talk about here. Now, when it comes to data classification, organization classify their data using labels that some of you might be familiar, you know? If you work for government, you're probably familiar with classification like secret and top secret. And if you work for a non-government organization, you usually see classification laws like, such as public, internal use only, partner use only or company confidential, you know, those type of classifications. So that's data classification. Now, when it comes to asset classification, you also need to be able to identify and classify your physical assets such as computers, smartphones, desks or company cars, you know? Unlike data, the assets are typically identified and classified by asset types. You know, most often asset classification, it is used for accounting purposes, but it can also be tied to information security. For example, an organization might designate a set of special laptops with the special software installed on them and assign them to employees that they travel a lot to a high-risk destinations. So their day-to-day asset can remain safety at home. So that's the asset classification when it comes based on the job and information security. So if you don't know who owns a piece of the data, how can you go through a formal access approval process? So when it comes to maintaining an asset ownership, we need to be able to understand the rules. So obviously, we can't properly account for assets if we don't know which department owns them also or assign the right type of laptop, for example, to that high-risk travel people that they go, if you don't have the asset classification. So when it comes to looking at the owners, we got the data owners, we got data custodian system owner, security administrators, supervisors and users, which they each have their own unique roles when it comes to protecting organizations' assets. Obviously, the data owner and information owner are the managers who owns and ensure that data protection and make sure the classification level is set correctly. They also are the people that they're going to tell you if the data is going to be a hard copy or soft copy. Now, when it comes to system owners, owners, you know, these are the guys that they involve in the software and hardware configuration and keeping up with the updates, patches and different type of maintenance. And data custodians are people that they do the backups and restorations and data redundancy and maintain the security of those programs. And, you know, system, security administrators are the guys that they assign the permissions and handle data on a network. Now, when it comes to users, the users must comply with all the rules. I mean, that's no questions, it's mandatory. If there is a mandatory policies, they have to obey by it. And then that role of the supervisors and managers are, is basically they have to oversee all the activities of the users and make sure that they are complying with the compliances and regulations and rules and policies. Now, I talked a few minutes ago about the data owners and how they can, you know, create the privacy and privacy policies. Obviously, these are the members of the management and senior management. They approve the access to data. And they tell who can access it, who cannot and how it needs to be, you know, stored, basically, those datas. Now, data processors are the users who read and edit the data, you know, on a regular basis. But when it comes to data remnants, data remnants happens when the data is deleted but remains recoverable. So when it comes to protecting our privacy, this is really important because a lot of organizations, they think that if they just deleted something from their hard drive, it's gone. It's not there anymore. But they don't realize that when they delete a file, the operating system marks that space of the file, the space that the file took up as available, but the data is still there. We all know that we can use some utilities and recover the data. Some of those utilities is even free online, you know? So we need to look at other options to get rid of the data again when it comes to data privacy. This is, this is really important. Now, obviously, secure deletion and overriding a data is one of the options. You know, you can use tools to overwrite the space that the file was using with the random ones and zeros, either in one pass or multiple passes, obviously, depending on what you're using and how you want to do that. The more passes that you use, obviously, is less likely that they can recover that data. Now, then we got encryption, makes the data unusable even after deletion. So we So we have to, you know, look at that also. That's another options that we can encrypt our data. Now, the third part is the de-gassing, you know, removing the magnetic field on the disk drive. It's very effective and it complies with many government requirements for the data remnants. And then collection limitation, obviously, security often focuses on protecting the data you already have. But part of the data protection is limiting how much data your organization collects, you know. For example, if you collect users' birthday, social security, or identification numbers, you then must, must protect the data. And if you don't need that data, you need to get rid of it. You know, a lot of countries, a lot of states or counties right now, these days, they have different laws and regulations when it comes to keeping data or limiting the data. So, but at the same time, many organizations, they're on, they're not aware of that. Excuse me, and continue to collect a lot of data, sensitive data from their users. Just a second, sorry. Okay. I apologize. So let's talk about retention, retention policies. Now, we talk about protecting privacy and our retention policies. What's a data retention policy? You know, first of all, what's a data retention? You know, data retention is a process based on the preservation and maintenance of valuable information as long as it's necessary. And then discarding it in a safe manner when its existence is no longer necessary. So what are the best practices when it comes to data retention? You know, ideally, a data retention policy should take into account the data retention laws a company must obey by or subject to. And those laws, they can be a state or country's laws. Also, you need to look at the value of that data over time, you know. If that data is going to be valuable six months from now or six years from now. Now, some, obviously, some companies are required to keep data for certain period of time. And some companies, they're not. And now, in, I think there was in 2006 that US Supreme Court recognized that it's not economic, for an entity to keep all of its data forever. You know, companies are more or less grateful to demonstrate that they only destroy what is no longer needed to be keeping, basically, as far as the laws, regulation, or business goals are concerned. So by doing this, the company is trying to be consistent on how much data they keep and for how long they're going to keep it. Now, there are different types of data retention, obviously. We can look at it, it's a hardware retention, it's a personal retention. Now, when it comes to hardware retention, obviously, the hardware needs to be replaced every, you know, three to five years, maybe, depending on the company's policies or what they need. And then, when it comes to personal retention, this is actually refers to knowledge of an employee that they gain during the employment for that organization. And normally, an NDA, non-disclosure agreement signed by the employee when they get hired, it's one of the preventive way of making sure that the proprietary data and trade secrets are not going to be shared with others or other companies. So these are the couple type of data retentions. Now, how to develop the data retention policy? There are three fundamental questions that every retention policy must answer. How to retain the data? First of all, we want to make sure that how we're going to keep that data. The data should be kept in a manner so that it's accessible whenever it's required. Also, we want to make sure that organizations can consider issues, including the scheme of the data classification. Obviously, the classification involves various categories, including functional, the organizational, or any other combination of these two. Normalization, again, it's another questions that they need to ask, answer. And then, how long to retain the data? The classical data retention approach were, you know, they keep everything and then they keep nothing. But in modern times, again, with the laws and regulations in place, there are different, you know, period of time that we, an organization needs to keep their documents. These are some examples, for example, for business documents, seven years, invoices, five years, and so on. So they can look at this, these charts, or these laws per states or cities or countries, and then they can answer that how long they're going to retain data. The third question is that they're gonna, they should be able to answer is what data to retain, retain? You know, the data related to business management, third-party dealings or partnership, obviously, is valuable to any organizations. But they have to decide that what data is useful to keep or retain and for how long in case of, obviously, litigation, or in case they need to be able to access that data again at any time. Okay. So let's see here, we're at nine fifteen, almost fifteen. I think it's a good time before I start the data security control. It's a good time to take like maybe about 10 minutes, a quick break, you know, bio break, special legs. And then we can continue on with the data security. So let's say it's nine fifteen, how about nine twenty-five? Jesse, are you good with nine twenty-five?
Nine twenty-five sounds great.
Okay.
During the break, Terry Mott will be emailing everybody confirmation of your attendance for the first hour. If you've responded with your name, first and last name that you wanted the certificate and the email, we'll have Terry Mott email you confirmation of the first hour. And then at the end of the, I'll put a card up for the second hour for another question. And at the end of that second hour, we'll email you a confirmation as well for your attendance for the second hour, everybody.
Good. So we'll see you in 10 minutes, nine twenty-five. Thank you.
Hey Sean, before you get started, I just wanted to let everyone know that an email has gone out from our marketing assistant, Terry Mott, from t-mott@nhlearninggroup.com. So you're going to want to make sure that you have received that email. If you have not, within the next five minutes, while Sean is presenting, just go ahead and chat your name and email either directly to Terry Mott, if you're on Facebook, or if you're on Zoom, message that into the chat. So I know that there are some people on Zoom specifically, Hector, Mary, and David Miller. We have not received your email, but I see that you are in the Zoom room. So we want to make sure that we are able to send your certificate to you. So please message us in the chat and email that we can send your certificate to. On Facebook, I think we're still going through some of the private messages that have been sent. We're going to close the question card for the name and email for this first hour. And in the, the end of the second hour, we'll put up a new question card to ask for your verification that you participated in the second hour. And we'll send a certificate for, or excuse me, an email for the second hour. Certificates will be completed within 24 hours of the end of the webinar. So with all that housekeeping aside, Sean, go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, Jesse, also, there is a question on Zoom from Wayne was asking, where do we send our name and email for the credit? Can you?
Yeah, just in the, in the chat. So if you include your name and email in the chat box, we'll go ahead and I'm working the Zoom chat box. So I'll go ahead and copy all that over and get that in the email confirmation. And Terry is working on Facebook to assist our people over there.
Okay, awesome. So welcome back and we're gonna start our second part of webinar. We're going to continue our conversation on data security controls. So let me make sure I got my slides here. I'm assuming that everybody can still see my screen. And we should be good to go. Just a second. Okay, let's talk about data security controls. So data security controls basically protect the confidentiality, integrity, and availability of your data, the CIA triad. So they help the organizations maintain a baseline of security and compliances. So when selecting these controls to protect your data, you'll need to consider a few things. So one of them is a data standards, baseline or minimum requirements, obviously, scoping and tailoring your security implementation and control implementations are things to consider when you're trying to select a control. Now, besides protecting, actually, this is according to sans.org. They said that besides protecting human life, data protection is the most critical security control that an organization can implement. And it is best achieved through the application of a, application of combination of encryption and integrity protection and data loss prevention techniques. So data can be thought of as being in three estates, obviously. Data address, in use, or in transit. Now, when we're talking about data address, basically, we're referring to data that resides on a desk, on a CD or on a magnetic tape, or really on any type of media that allows for a long-time retention. It could be there for days, weeks, years, even decades, you know. Much of our physical data, we're talking about hard copies, can also be considered as a data address. Now, all the data address needs to be protected also. It presents a risk, actually, a high risk because of the possibility of a long-term storage. The longer it is around, the longer it is exposed, both to physical and logical loss. Removable media, especially those small, easy concealed data drives present a law, a particular concern, basically. A combination of physical security, data policy, retention policies, and classification policies can help us to protect our data. So security controls that you can implement to protect data address obviously includes in having a data recovery plan, you know, a concrete plan to how you're going to restore your data after a failure of a disaster. Use a very strong encryption, implement access control. Now, that can be a technical or physical, you know, mechanism for limiting a person's access to that data. Investigating a password management tools to store the passwords, or, you know, having a good password management tools, that's one option. Maintaining control of those removable media, obviously, that's a big one. Make sure that the labeling policies are applied to your devices or storage devices and being followed, obviously, those policies. Removable data should be stored in a secure, safe location. You know, you can just put it in a server room or somewhere that people can have access. And obviously, documentation, we need to document the location of those removable data. That's very important. Need to know where those datas are at any time. Now, when it comes to data in use, basically refers to any type of data that is actively being processed right now. It can be found in RAM, CPUs, cache, some registers, you know. Traditionally, the most common method of protecting data in use was to maintain very strict access control. Until recently, data in use was not considered a candidate for encryption because of the technical challenges of keeping it secure while being used simultaneously. But new threats, you know, such as cold boots attacks, rootkits, bootkits, and some other malicious attacks change that, that mentality. Now, we requiring some kind of encryption keys and restoring encryption keys in CPU registers rather than keeping it in RAM and use different type of encryption, use a secure enclaves, you know, those are the methods that we can implement. The biggest technical challenge to encrypting the data in use is the question of how to maintain referential integrity between the cipher text and its corresponding clear text, basically. Especially for operations such as searching, sorting, and filtering when it comes to this. So any mapping between the two must, they must use some kind of mechanism that it's not predictable and resist decoding by hackers if it gets, it gets hacked. So the data must be able to remain secure, also must be usable, and it must be usable with the acceptable performance, obviously. Now, the other part of the data is data in transit. Data in transit is the data that's on the move, is traveling between the networks or being moved from one type of media to another media, you know. And as it crosses the wires or it sends through the air, obviously, there is a risk. And in order to protect your data, you must consider, obviously, its exposure. The exposure on an internal network may be perceived differently than exposure on the external network. Physical cables and wireless connections present different risks, you know. And you have to consider what's the likelihood that it will be intercepted. Now, you can use a combination of hardware, software, and policies to protect your data in transit. One method is to use encryption to make it nearly, or almost impossible to read, read the bits as they go by. You know, when placing security controls on your data in transit, also keep in mind that web traffic should be protected with the latest version of your SSL, you know, secure socket layer, sensitive data sent with the email should be encrypted, you know. Obviously, the attachments also needs to be encrypted with encryption tools. Non-Web covered data traffic should be encrypted with application-level encryptions. Connections between application servers and database servers should be encrypted. When application-level encryption isn't available, consider a tunneling protocol, you know, VPN or so. And encryption should be used for a high-sensitive data, even if it's in the protected subnets. So we need to make sure that we have all these plans in place, basically, when we have data in transit. Now, I'm talking about encryption, encryption, encryption. So data encryption is basically the process of scrambling the data, pretty much, I think, everybody on this call, they know that. But, you know, it's not, it's good to have a refresher here. So we're talking about process of scrambling data so that only an authorized person or a device can read it. It's a single best control you can use to secure your data at this point, whether it's stored on a media or moving across the networks, you know. You can encrypt data with hardware and/or software, consider encryption the data, or basically consider to encrypt your data before storing it again, because we talked about data address earlier. So when your data is stored on a media encryption, basically protected from unauthorized access, even if somebody steals that media or hard drive and gain access to the physical device. But encryption can help you to keep it safe. Now, when it comes to when it comes to, you know, data protection, we just talked about these methods when it comes to data rest and data motions. Now, let's jump to communication and network security. We talk about data a lot here in last few minutes, so let's talk about the network security. So, obviously, there are hundreds of communication protocols that define rules for different machines exchanging information. You know, these rules can be the syntax, semantics, and error detection of the data packets. These rules ensure that the successful transmission of data between multiple entities, it's possible. Also, the parties involved in this communication process have to agree with each other so that the message can be passed through from one entity to another. And the different hardware, software, and other devices using these communications can basically be able to access those datas without any issues. The open system interconnection, or most of us knows, we know that as an OSI model was initially developed to break down the problem and assign the duties to seven different layers in a network communication. You know, we had physical, data link, network transport, session, presentation, and application. So the OSI model paved the way to the creation of the four-layer TCP IP model, which is network access, internet, transport, and application. So the TCP IP model is the foundation of practical and workable protocols for computers and networks to interact. So the TCP IP model is the standard industry today. But almost, I think, over 30 years of history, basically, all operation systems support and operate with the TCP IP protocol these days. As the user population of the internet obviously grows, the need for secure communication rises greatly. So government institutions and companies constantly adapting online communication system to obviously facilitate activities such as payments, identification, application, marketing, I mean, you name a few. Communication protocols between the two computers are indispensable these days to safeguard computers. Obviously, we need to make sure all these activities, digital activities between the networks are safe. So there are some protocols that are several key examples of, you know, secure communication on the transport layer of both the OSI and TCP IP models. And we're talking about secure socket layer, transport layer security, remote procedure call, and secure electronic transaction. So as I said earlier, there are hundreds of protocol working on different levels of the OSI and TCP IP network model, you know. These, the ones that you see on the screen right now, just some example of those key protocols that can facilitate communications protocol, basically. The mechanism of secure communication protocols has a substantial emphasizes on the process of authentication. So it's important not to mix up authentication with authorization here because authentication identifies the individual or organization via username, passwords, and mix up of authentication. I'm sorry, a mix of username, passwords, and even devices, you know, to authorize access, and we're going to talk about that during the identity and access management. Authentication is a decisive step above all else, basically. So, yep, okay, so identity test, obviously.
Hey Sean.
Yeah.
We have some questions coming in on Facebook, actually. One question was about are there security responsibility boundaries for data in transit?
Ask me the question one more time, please.
Are there security responsibility boundaries for data in transit?
Well, yes, yes, there is, there is a responsibility. And again, every company have their own set of policies and compliance in place, but I would say, yes, there is a responsibility.
And then one more, this actually goes back to just before the break, but how long should email archives be kept?
That's, that depends on what kind of emails we have and what kind of documents or what kind of policies that company has. Again, based on the laws and regulations within the states and countries, every, and organizations, they may have different type of, you know, time period. Some companies, they keep them for 12 months, some companies they keep them 24 months. Again, it depends on the type of organization and type of communication that you do within your emails. Now, my personal preferences or my, you know, suggestion is that if you don't encrypt your emails, first of all, don't ask for personal question, information. And if you don't, you don't want to keep those emails, you want to get rid of them. But again, that, that goes based on the company policy, laws, and regulations within the state and the country.
Perfect, that's all we have, thanks.
Okay, great. So let's go back, where was I? Yeah, I think we talked about the, these, let's go ahead and talk about these four communication protocols. So secure socket layer SSL nowadays, basically, computer servers and networks are required to handle more and more complex online activities, you know. The data during the transmissions can be at risk, you know, from wiretapping to spoofing. And if a user sends sensitive information such as credit card numbers or social security numbers or even identification number, the connection can be intercepted. And basically, the attacker can seize this information and use it. A good example of it, actually, about a year ago, we had a client that their emails got intercepted and somebody sent an email on behalf of somebody within the company as for certain type of information. And unfortunately, a lot of people within that company answered those questions and gave those information. So the email was, you know, intercepted, the email was not encrypted, so. But again, let's go back to SSL. Now, SSL is the popular encryption solutions when it comes to providing session and live connection security between two or more parties. And it has three objectives, keep in mind, that's privacy protection, identity authentication, and reliability. Now, the web browsers deliver a request from identification to the web server using a symmetric encryption. And then the web server replies with a certified authority digital certificate, which we all know as CA digital certificate. In this process, both sides exchange several messages to negotiate the exchange of the keys, basically. Once the web browser recognizes the identity of that web server via that CA, then they will establish a symmetric encrypted communication to exchange information. Now, secure HTTP or HTTPS is an application example of SSL. The address bar of your web browser, if you look at it, provides hints that you are using a secure layer communication like that HTTPS and the path lock that you can see on your browser. Now, transport layer security, it goes hand in hand with SSL in the form of SSL slash TLS. Actually, in fact, TLS is the new version of, or new protocol of SSL. Most of the SSL, what we know as SSL connection these days is TLS. The framework of the TLS remains substantially the same as SSL, but there are some several key differences, you know. First, TLS operates on the application layer of the OSI model and then transport layer of the TCP IP model. And the second, the final version of SSL stopped as SSL version three. And the following up upgrade was named TLS. So these days, when people talk about SSL, keep in mind, it's basically TLS that they're talking about because they work together. They actually, it's like a new version of SSL. Now, secure a remote procedure call or SRPC. There are many computers applications perform interactively on the basis of request and response between the client and the servers on the network. A good example of the program on the client side requests a service, data, or other resources from the program on a server side, we do that all the time, you know. Then the server answers the request of that client and synchronous interaction is being established for both parties, obviously. So this interactive operation is a remote procedure call or RPC, as we all know. So the client server operations suspend when the reunion or when the, I'm sorry, during the connection or the runtime of that, that process is off. So in RPC implementation scenario, instead of encrypting the data traffic, authenticating the client is more important. So hence the principle of the SRPC to produce public and private keys to the client and server for authentication. Now, when it comes to secure electronic transaction or SET, SET is a protocol specifically developed for secure online financial transaction. It's primarily protect credit card transactions among purchasers and merchants and the banks. So the early supporters of the SET were financial and web browser services such as Mastercard, Visa, Microsoft, Netscape, if you remember Netscape back in the day. SET provides a digital certificate as a sort of digital wallet for each party to ensure that the transaction stays confidential. And each certificate has a unique public key for their identity verification, basically. All the data communication via SET among the three parties are encrypted, so none of them can access the sensitive information. Now, SET is very popular, or yeah, it's, it's a most popular set of protocol when it comes to e-commerce these days. And it is endorsed by a big company like Mastercard and Visa for, for any type of transaction online. Okay, so this is a good time to take a little bit of break and talk about security or cybersecurity certifications and training that you may think of for the future. So why, why these days it's so important, everybody gets some kind of education or some kind of information when it comes to cybersecurity? Now, keep in mind that the cybersecurity workforce gap has increased since last year, primarily due to global surge in hiring demands, you know, especially in US, the cyber is cybersecurity workforce gap is nearly about 500,000. So combining US cybersecurity workforce, basically, estimate that this gap data, it needs, it's going to grow by 62% if you don't meet this gap today, basically, and within next couple of years. So it is estimated that the business will fall victim of ransomware every one, every 11 seconds by 2021, which is like we're only a level away. And then the cybercrime cost over six trillion annually by 2021. So you can see can be devastating for any type of organization or country or even city when, when things like this happen. Now, there are some other, you know, things that there was a mention, as far as the major wireless carrier can be attacked, cloud vendor will suffer a breach, which that can affect thousands of companies. Now, today's job concern about cybersecurity professional, it doesn't matter what branch of this military or private sector you're working, obviously, 36% of people, they have lack of skilled or experience, 28% lack of standard terminology or effective, and that's where the CIS SP actually comes in place. And then, as you see, lack of resources to do the job effectively. So there are some concerns when it comes among cybersecurity professional. I'm sure that you all have some of these concerns when it comes to your jobs and your responsibilities. Now, obviously, there are training and certifications out there when it comes to security, and these are all of them. And, you know, it's just crazy when you look at these, these, and again, especially if you're in the military services and you're working with the DOD, there are certain guidelines, as I showed you earlier. But I made a chart that makes it a little bit easier to follow. So a lot of people, they start with security plus, and then from there, they move up based on the job responsibility and organization, and then the job roles, obviously. So as you see, there is a logical transition from one certificate to another one. These are just some samples, examples of it. Again, if, if you're thinking about advancing your knowledge, your education, your certification, and your, you know, skill set, please do talk to us and we'll be more than happy to help you to figure out what's the best logical step for you guys when it comes to go for the security training or certification in the future. Again, anybody who has any questions or any, if they want to have any type of conversation with us, please let Jesse Knows send us an email, put it in chat box, and we'll be more than happy to sit and talk to you. This is not a sales pitch, this is just a consulting, talking to you and, and help you to figure out what's your best next step is. Okay, so let's go back to our webinar. That was just a little break from all these interesting security domains and talk about certification. So again, if you have any questions about certification, training, what needs to be done, prerequisites, please do reach out to us and I'll be more than happy to sit and talk to you on a conference call and explain all these things. So let's talk about security assessment and testing. In today's world, you know, security is not a luxury anymore, it's a necessity. We all know that. With the introduction of technology, businesses have been setting up online infrastructure. And in doing so, you know, they have introduced more targets to hacking community. Actually, I don't think I know any business that is not online anymore. I mean, to certain point, everybody is somewhat as connected, any type of businesses and even mom and pop shops. So it is, it is a need these days for network security, basically, and do the network security or adequate security assessment and testing on any type of network. It doesn't matter if it's a small network, two, three guys networked a huge, you know, hundreds of thousands of workers and users and equipments. So then the security assessment is a necessity these days because of the world that we're living in. Now, when it comes to security assessment, a test, testing, as the name suggests, is the process of analyzing the security standards of a system. During the process, we direct, or we'll be directing, yeah, well, we dissect the system for any possible vulnerabilities, risk or threats, and then we redirect our attentions to those areas. So most of the time, assessing and testing the security involves the following steps, basically, if you look at it. So requirement study and situation analysis, security policies creation and updates, document review, risk identification, vulnerability scans, data analysis and report and briefing. So these are the steps that we're going to take to assess a security within a network. So let's talk about possible threats. I mean, out of the many threats that needs to be catered for, here are few of them that, the most common ones, basically. So the elevation of privilege attack, in, in a privileged elevation attack, a hacker exactly does what the name says. They elevate their privileges on a system from, say, a user to administrator, and then they can avoid, you know, any any type of access control less, and they can bypass any type of policies in place. URL manipulation, this happens a lot. It happens every day these days. It's one of the easiest way of hacking a system. And even though most of the system these days are prone to such attacks, there are some vulnerable infrastructure that can be accessed via manipulation of the URL. To avoid this, basically, network engineers need to implement like an authentication and or authorization techniques in place. Now, a denial of service or DDoS attack, you know, this is basically makes a machine or any other resources of a system unavailable to unauthorized administrative staff. They're really sophisticated attacks and they need to care to be to be able to prevent these type of attacks. I mean, if you are following the news, you can hear, see or hear that DDoS attacks happens on a weekly basis, if not on a daily basis, at least on the news, you can see that this once a week. Now, when it comes to spoofing the identity, you know, obviously, this is again, one of the big ones that happens a lot these days. I've seen it in last, I would say, eight, nine months, I've seen it maybe four or five times personally within the clients that we're dealing with. Basically, in this type of attack and hacker impersonate legitimate users of the system and gain access and basically gain access to the resources of that network or the system. So now, when it comes to adequate security assessment tests, they can go a long way toward ensuring that the system is free of the most rudimentary vulnerabilities that can be presented in a network architecture. Now, some of these techniques are like ethical hacking, you know. You saw when I was showing you the slides when it comes to certification, one of the certification that's very popular is certified ethical hackers. Why this is so popular? Because it's one of the methods that we can test the security of a network, it's ethical hacking. So not all hackers in the world are bad, not all hackers are gonna be having malicious intent. You know, the white hat or ethical hackers are people that they have the hacking knowledge, but they use it for the good. They use the the techniques that they know, the 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 knowledge that they have to find the possible flaws in a system. An ethical hacker tries to bypass the security of the system using the most sophisticated techniques and tools that they all know to find the possible vulnerability in the system. So when we talk about hacking, not all hackers bad, we got the white hackers or white hat hackers or ethical hackers. And again, if you're looking for that type of training, please talk to us. We have the greatest, one of the greatest training when it comes to ethical hacking in place. The second one is the penetration testing. That's another technique that is being used with the tools that we're trying to penetrate the system through the network to find any point of attacks or any possible point of attacks. Again, that that becomes, is becoming very popular these days that the companies hire people or they use their internal and staff to do penetration testing because they need to try to figure out where are the holes are. And then we got load testing. Load testing of a system should also be performed before making it live, you know, especially if we're talking about very sensitive data. So in this type of process, a system is tested with the maximum expected load. And then we're gonna look at this performance and evaluate this performance. And example of load testing is basically sending thousands of thousands of requests to servers at the same time and to see if the server stop responding or is responding efficiently and is effective. So these are the few techniques that we use for the security testing these days. Now, in order to prepare for security testings, obviously, there are some approach. There are some steps we need to take. We can just go and say, okay, hey, Mr. Ethical Hacker, come and hack my network. Obviously, there are certain things that we need to do before we do that. Same as the hackers that they hack into the networks, they do all these steps in the process. So first of all, we'll have to study the security architecture should be the first step. This should be the first step. And this is the basically, we look at the business requirements, we look at the objectives, security goals, and we need to understand all the terms that a firm's security compliance is dictating. The second is security architecture needs to be analyzed. You know, we need to look at the architecture of that organization and we need to analyze that architecture. Now, once we analyze that, then we can classify the security testing. This is step is basically include collecting the system setup data that was used to develop softwares or network entities like hardware, what type of technology, what type of operating system they're using. And then we need to write down the security risk and vulnerability that it can be found in any of these classifications. Then we create a threat profile based on the model. And then, once the threat has been identified and vulnerability has been found, then we prepare the test plan and we're gonna look for the issues or threats. Now, we have to have some kind of matrix to be able to look at every threat, vulnerability, and then the risks. So that's gonna be our next step. And then at the seventh step, we're gonna look at the tools that we're gonna use to do those tests. Again, these are the steps that we need to look at it before we jump into doing a penetration testing or ethical hacking. And then, once we're done, we're gonna do the case document. Obviously, we prepare that and then we're gonna execute the test cases. Now, once we're done, we create a report. We make sure that we include the type of threats, vulnerability, the risk that we found, and then how they were dealt with if we had to deal with any type of, you know, mitigation. So we can bypass this because we already talked about that. Obviously, CISSP has some prerequisites. Talk to us if you this, if you're thinking about taking CISSP. And we'd be more than happy to have a conversation about that. But I'm gonna bypass that because we already talked about it. Now, we're gonna look at the identity and access management. This is another domain within the CISSP that they cover. This is gonna be the longest part of this presentation, probably. So I'm gonna go for another, I would say, maybe 10 minutes, and then we're gonna take another break. And then when we come back from the break, we're gonna finish it up. We may finishing it a little bit before 11:30, but we'll see. So when it comes to identity and access management, we all heard about this terminology. We all heard about the IM. It's basically a set of business processes, information and technology for managing and using digital identities. IM includes the people, processes, technology required to provide secure and auditable access to systems and applications. Again, we have to make sure that we can audit anything because that's a big thing when it comes to security. So a very large part of maintaining the confidentiality, integrity and availability of data and the system depends on the identity and access control. Again, we're going back to that CIA triad. That's what we were talking about. It's very important to have all the pillar of that triad in place, otherwise, nothing is gonna work. So if you look at it in every domain that we're talking about, we're going back to those that triad. So again, in order to maintain the confidentiality, integrity and availability of our data, our system depends on identity and access control. So by properly identifying the user or systems that are trying to gain access, you can determine how much, if any, control to to grant him, basically, you'll give him access. So this basically keeps unwanted entities out of our system while ensuring that the proper entities or individuals have exactly what they need and nothing more. So this is how we can limit them. Now, by breaking down the term access control, we can identify the goals of nearly any type of implementation, either physical or logical. So we're controlling who or what has access to data, the system, the building, and so on. So access control is basically the process of allowing only authorized users, programs or other computer systems such as networks to observe modifying or other ways, taking possession of the processes or resources of our environment or even a physical facility. So it's also a mechanism to limit or for limiting the use of some resources to authorized users, so we can limit also. In access control, the term subject is given to the entity requesting access, and then the term object is given to the entity being accessed. So these are the two things that we want to make sure that we understand when we're talking about the access control. So subject is the entity that requesting access and the object is the entity that is being accessed. So the and and keep in mind that the subject can be a person, can be a system or process, and the object can be any type of resources, including another process, it can be a building, it can be a physical, you know, anything. So the access control process limits the subject's access to the object using predefined rules, roles or labels. So it's possible for a program or a process to be both a subject or an object. Now, whether it's acting as a subject or object will depend on whether it is requesting access to an objects or providing an access to a subject. So that can be a little bit confusing, especially with using subject and object. Just keep in mind a program or a process or a a system can be both subject and object depending on what they're doing at that time, either requesting access or providing access. Now, there are types of access control, you know. If you look at it, there are several categories or types, if you will, of access control services that support the phases of access control implementation. Now, the importance of uniqueness is hard. It's 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 kind of hard to overstate when it comes to auditing because we, and auditing actually rely on unique subject identifiers. So if you look at the active access control services here, obviously, we got identification and authentication. It provides unique identifier for each authorized subject attempting to access them. And then we're looking at authorization, audit and accountability. It's also important in the identification mechanism that the system that support access control service or services are reliable, scalable and capable of highest level of confidentiality and integrity. So these are the type of access control services. Now, when it comes to access control services implementation, this this type of implementation requires for all systems regardless of the access control system type that there are certain steps that we need to take. So once the access control rules are provided and implemented, then the system must limit access based on those rules. Now, the implementation access control services involves these steps, identifying, verifying, evaluating, creating and reviewing. So when it comes to identifying, identifying the individuals or entity attempting to access an object, verifying or authenticating the individual's identity, evaluating the rules and or roles to see what the individuals is permitted to do, creating an audit trail by writing each access attempts and functions performance to a log file, obviously. If you have ever been audited, you've seen the log files are playing a big role and reviewing the log to see what was completed, when was done and by whom. And this, obviously, this review is performed normally by managers or supervisors or auditors that can help us to create accountability when it comes to system access process. Okay, so we're getting to reference monitor. I think this is about our, let's, let's take a break here and then we continue, we'll finish shop after the break. So Jesse is 10:13, that's kind of counted as a 10:15. Let's do another 10 minutes, 10:25. We can we can regroup at 10:25. Mary asked a question that if he can, she can have access to this presentation. Yes, Mary, I can send you, these are slides, that's no problem. If anybody wants, just let us know. And I can send the slides to Jesse and he can send it to you. One thing, keep in mind, these are all extracted from CISSP training. So if you are deciding or you're thinking about going for that training, you're gonna have all these information more in depth through that training. But again, if you would like to have a copy of this slides, I'll be more than happy to send it to you. Just let us know who wants it and then we send it. We just don't want to send it to everybody and create you know, a lot of issues on your butts. Anyway, 10:20, 10:25, let's regroup. Thank you.
Sounds good. And during the break, if you could get a chance to answer the question, if you're on Facebook to confirm and verify your second hour for the second CEU, we just posed a question on the Facebook group. What branch and base do you work at? If you're a military contractor, just list the company that you're at, the city and state that you're based at. So what branch and base do you work at, looking to see where in the country you are so that we can make sure that we are verifying who has been attending when we send out these certificates. If you're in Zoom, go ahead and use the chat box, just like you did, to put in your name and email and answer the question, what branch and base do you work at? I'll have, I'll post the question in the chat and Terry Ma is fielding the questions on Facebook. Everybody should have received an email confirmation by now for the hour one, and we will take these responses and email you confirmation for hour two. See you in 10 minutes. As we wait for Sean to get back, I just wanted to make confirmation for Lawrence and Hung. Terry said that she has received your emails and that some people are having issue getting the email confirmation from Terry. Most everyone else, it seems like we have confirmed you for hour one and locked you in. And Terry is gonna be compiling everybody's responses for hour two while Sean is delivering hour three. So if you haven't gotten a chance, as you get back, go ahead and answer the hour two check-in question. If you're on Zoom, the question was posed by myself just to check in and see what branch and base you are at. And if you're a federal contractor, you can list the company that you work for and the state that you work out of so that we can verify who's attending with our certifications. On Facebook, the question has been posed. If you're watching on mobile, down at the bottom of your mobile screen, there's a question mark icon that is near the emoji buttons. If you tap that question mark button, it will bring up the question to be answered. Some people have reported that they're not able to see that. You need to be a member of the DOD certification study group. So if you go ahead and request to join that group, Terry Ma will let you in live right now and we'll leave that question up for the a good section of hour three while we get your responses for hour two. Or you can just direct message Terry Ma directly. She is handling a lot of inputs right now, so just stand by. We'll get those confirmations for hour two out. With that housekeeping out of the way, Sean, there was one question that somebody was asking about, I think. our classes and courses. Do you offer software developer security certification courses such as CFS LP and cloud security?
Yeah, we again, I can't tell you that the class on top of my head right now because because so many of those classes on our schedule. But yes, we offer most of the courses that available out there. And even if we don't have it on our catalog, we have partners that we work with. So again, if if you're interested in that that training, please let Jesse know we can set up a time that we have a conversation and I get a little bit more data from you. And I'll provide you with the information, either me or William or one of the account executives, we can do this for you. But most of the security training that's out there, we can offer that. We have a lot of those classes on our catalog.
Sounds good. And we'll have William jump on towards the end of the presentation just to let everybody know about how they can contact him and reach out for a training. But go ahead with our three, Sean.
Yeah, good. So as I said, we will be, this is the last part of the presentation. We're in the middle of the identity and access management, I am. And I'm thinking that we're going to finish up a little bit early. So we can have William to chiming and give some information also. And then we can go on. So if you remember, we talked about quite a few things when it came to identity access management, we got to reference monitor. So reference monitor, you may hear as mentioned as RM is a conceptual component that determines if a subject can access an object. Again, remember, subject is the one who requesting to access an object is the party or entity that is giving the access. So RMs normally are found in the operating systems and network access control systems. And the security kernel implements the RM in an operating system. So you got to keep in that in mind that basically allowing the system to enforce access controls. Now, the RM implementation or the resource monitoring implementation depends on the access control methods used by that organization and it must possess basically specific characteristics. And some of those characteristics are on the screen right now. It must be obviously tamper proof. It must always be invoked.
Sean, it doesn't look like I'm, I don't see your screen.
You're not seeing the screen. Let's see. Can you see this? Okay, sorry about that. So and it must be compact and verifiable. To ensure proper access control, obviously, the RM must not be manipulated and cannot be bypassed. So it has to be small, so the code inside can be analyzed for weaknesses. And the implementation basically assume the subjects are not allowed access to the objects by default. So there's a not allowed by default. And subject also may be allowed access if the rules have been configured to allow it. So that's as far as the reference monitor goes now, let me get back to my screen here. So there are three significant access control administration methods available. We're talking about centralized, decentralized, and hybrid. So centralized, centralized access control involves administering access control at a centralized site. Basically, all requests for access are handled by a single group of administrators, basically. So and when administrated centrally, requests are handled uniformly by the staff. Centralized access control most often being used or using protocols specifically designed for this type of process such as remote authentication, dialing user services or radius, terminal access controller, access control system or TCACS and diameters. So those are some examples of it. Now, in decentralized access control, basically the administration of the access control elements are in distributed locations throughout the enterprise or organization. And by moving this administrative process to localized parts of the enterprise, it's basically being placed closer to the individuals requesting access. That can be seen a lot in the cloud technologies these days. Now, the often this basically most of the time eliminates the bottlenecks found in the centralized administrations when requests are being delayed because of the workload or lack of having enough staff. Now, local administrators are most of the time aware of the critical situations can and they can react quickly when something happened or something is almost happening. But decentralized administrator does have a few disadvantages this when you look at it. Now, when it comes to hybrid, it is possible to implement hybrid access control, basically using the centralized function with the local administration and decentralized. So for example, the local administrator has access to the centralized radio system to establish new accounts, manage existing accounts, and then the benefit of both types of access control administration can be found in this hybrid system. Basically, they they get they get to have the benefits of both. Now, this advantage of hybrid system is the lack of a control to specify which administrators are allowed to update which accounts basically. And changes made by a local administrator may be modified by a centralized administrator or vice versa. So again, there are some disadvantage to hybrid, but it is a nice way of using the benefits of both of the control system, control administration methods. Now, part of the administering access control in your organization, it's whether logical or physical is to stick to a life cycle of provisioning, review, and revocation or deprovisioning, basically. You will want to review the access and authorization levels of all subjects on a regular basis. Now, by the use, by be the users, be the systems or services, it doesn't matter. Now, when we're talking about provisioning, what that means is basically where you determine that a new or existing entity requires new access control privileges. In provisioning access control to an entity, basically, you have to think of the principle of less least privilege and separation of duties. So that's the best way of looking at it. So does this entity absolutely need to have access or that level of access to this particular system or resources based on their current job roles? Also, you should consider how this new access may be revoked in the future. So in case the job role is changed or in case there is any issues, how can we revoke that as quick as possible and as efficient possible rather than waiting for a, you know, a time or a set time to determine if this is the right one or not. Then obviously, we comes to the review cycles or part of the life cycle. This is basically a continuous monitoring and auditing of the access controls to make sure that is effective and reducing risk. So any hardware or software that you're using or considering should be capable of at least a minimal level of auditing. Again, auditing is really important when it comes to risk assessment, risk mitigation, and then and having a good security practices in place. So we want to make sure that everything can be have some kind of audits level in place. Now, there are obviously tools that we can use to help us to audit processes by looking for known issues. Now, the last part of the life cycle I'm going to talk about is going to be revocation or deprovisioning. So at some point, we will need to remove the access control provisions that we made or created a certain time for certain entities. Let's a good example of it, an employee may be terminated or demoted or promoted. And they have different job roles. They don't need to have access to the resources that they had at the time, especially if it's sensitive resources. So periodically, we need to review and audit to determine who we need to revoke the access or the provision if it's necessary to certain degrees. Now, some of the revocation might be temporarily and it might be based on the job rotation. If if in our organization, we do job rotation, so we may have to do temporarily revoke certain permissions or provision. But either way, this process should not be delayed and it's very crucial to avoid the risk of an unauthorized access. Again, if somebody is terminated or or they got demoted or promoted or they're on the rotation. So that brings us to the policies, you know, with the life cycle in mind, we have to begin writing access control policies. We just talked about those cycles. So what are the policies that we can look at? Now, we should start with administrative policies. That's a very first step that I would suggest to do that. That's basically policies that written by the security team with the input from management, HR, legal department, and so on. Once the administrative policies has been placed and designed, then we're going to reinforce the technical policies. These are policies that apply through the interface of a specific system or software or processes. For example, once a login policy is written or created, then it can be reinforced with using a group policy or active directory within the Windows servers. So that policy should reinforce the length of our password, for example, the number of days that you can use that passwords, how strong or complex can be. And how many attempts we can have without before the system locks out. So basically, all of our system hardware and most of our software will have the ability to implement some form of access control based on the policies that we have created in the administrative levels. Now, some of the password policy examples, for example, a password might be at least seven characters, which is not good, just as an example, again, don't quote me on this. And we have to use three different types of characters, again, uppercase lowercase numbers and symbols, for example. A user identity must be verified before the IT staff can reset the password. I mean, that's a given policy that every organizations they should have. And then another one, there must be a process in place to suspend or deactivate the user account in case of employees termination, account compromise or infections, you know, we need to have some kind of policies that we can eliminate those access right away if somebody is gaining terminated. We can just wait for every Friday or every last day of the month. And also, we need to be auditing the user accounts and and any active user accounts must be disabled. You know, after certain number of days, for example, somebody says after every 30 days, if somebody is inactive, we need to disable that account. Again, depends on the policies and procedures that it's been written by the administrative and then we are going to implement. Those are some examples of it. Now, at the same time, we need to consider a logical threat to facility access also. You know, one concern is an electronic intrusion into your network. For example, if you have Wi-Fi signals extend too far past your, you know, facilities limitations or boundaries that people can have access to public basically on the sidewalks. You know, we hear that all the time that that hacker have access to somebody's Wi-Fi, you know, or a hacker. So they can easily sniff the traffic without even needing to be physically inside your building. So there are some things that we need to know. We also need to consider how an attacker can hijack any network utilities or devices operating under any type of control systems, you know, if an attacker gain access to a critical facility, the system like an HX system, they can cause, you know, harm, considerable harm. Attackers may also be able to remotely tamper with the network doors, mantraps, or other physical access control mechanism. So there are also physical access control access concerns basically to to your facility that you need to consider. Unauthorized people entering the facility, you know, we talked about earlier that just putting a stop sign and you know, don't come in. It doesn't deter people from entering, you know. We need to have some kind of locks or other other means in place to keep unauthorized people out like guards, you know, checkpoints and so on. So now unrestricted access to all areas within the facility, that's another thing to consider. Once inside, we need to be able to handle access to certain areas, you know, we don't want everybody have, for example, access to every rooms or server rooms or where we have our equipments. So again, we need to make sure that even if somebody gain access to our physical environment, we gave them the access, but again, they should have some kind of controlled access in a place. We can just give them unrestricted access to everywhere. Now, we also need to consider logical threats to the system access, you know, attackers accessing attacker can access to configure a console that we have for for an entrance or something like that. Systems that provide services to your customers or employees will need configuring by administrator and attacker can can access those console or applications. So we don't want to use, obviously, the default passwords. That's pretty much everybody knows that. And then remote access to critical system needs to be controlled. We don't want to, we want to make sure that we establishing an authentication and authorization process for any type of remote services. So also, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, there are also physical access concerns for your systems. You know, an attacker could physically damage a server in order to take take down some of the mission critical critical services like a network share that employees use every day. So even servers that they don't host databases need to be segmented from the rest of the public in closely guarded room against server rooms that needs to be locked and not have give access to everybody. And network equipments can also be physically damaged. You cannot imagine back in the day when I was doing consulting, you cannot imagine how many businesses I would walk in and the server rooms didn't even had the door or it was just open for everybody to go in. So we want to make sure that all the equipments are locked and and controlled when it comes to access. We don't want to give access to every employees in the company when it comes to equipments. Now, we also need to consider logical threats to device accesses, you know, attackers accessing the configuration console, as I said, make sure all the devices are configured with the strong username and passwords. And we don't want to leave anything with the default passwords. That's a big one. I mean, these days, especially when it comes to organizations, they're very good about this to change the default passwords. But on the personal level, when people using it at home, still a lot of people use default passwords for their equipment. So unrestricted access to workstations, obviously, a big no, no, we need to have some kind of authorization and authentication in place. Now, I, you know, directory services like Active Directory are a common way of controlling. you know, directory services like Active Directory are a common way of controlling user access to devices in an organization these days, especially if they're all using, you know, Windows servers or Microsoft in a Microsoft environment. But with the phenomenon of mobility and bringing your own devices to, to your organization, it created a little bit of challenge to making sure all those devices are secure and security compliances are in place. So again, the administrators should have some kind of security or policies in place and implemented for the mobile devices and users' devices that they're bringing, like smartphones and tablets and so on. You know, we, at the least, they can ask for the pins on the, on those devices to put some, some kind, some kind of pin or passwords to lock those devices. There are also physical access concerns for devices, devices that are always at risk for theft, whether they remain on premise or not. Again, there's a concern if there are frequent guests that makes their way through your offices, you know. Again, there are certain places that there are guests always come and go. We have to be, you know, some kind of, they have to be some kind of process or some kind of enforcement to lock their laptops or mobile devices from accessing our network in our environment. So, and if you don't use services such as Bluetooth or NFC near field communication, geolocating, those type of things, make sure that all the devices are off, or they have them off and consider turning off and allow people use those services. Now, another thing to consider is obviously threats to information access. You know, databases containing sensitive company information are prime targets for hackers and intruders. They should be isolated from the rest of the network whenever possible. And in all instances, we need to protect with authentication and authorization mechanism or rules that being afforded by database management systems. So users remotely, we got remote users that connect to the database. Now we gotta make sure that they have certain privileges when they do that. Now, there are also physical access concerns when it comes to the information. External and internal attackers simply walking out with a bunch of servers or storage devices. So protecting the hardware that contains the databases is crucial also. Again, any rooms or data centers that hold this storages or hardware needs to be locked, needs to be monitored and sensitive information, if they're in a hard copy, they have to really be in a locked cabinets or, or in a safe environment because they can be easily stolen or copied. So these are some guidelines for planning physical and logical access, as you see on a slide, obviously. There are a few guidelines here, these are all suggested guidelines, obviously. You know, the biggest one, you know, follow the identity and access provisioning processes and make sure that we have the administrative policies in place. And then we implement any type of deterrent controls to prevent attackers from even trying to gain access to our system. Now, you know, the password management, obviously, automation of password management features such as self-service password resets, password synchronization, forgot password link, et cetera. When we're talking about privilege, user management, you know, management of user identities such as system or service accounts with elevated access rights in platform or applications. For example, root access in a Linux machines or administrator in Windows servers, you know. And then the IM governance, identity and access management governance, something else. Basically, the governance is focused on establishing the element necessary for, to effectively achieve the IM program vision through the alignment and coordination of different teams and activities. So identity management is basically is the process of controlling how users and other entities are recognized in various system or different systems. Identity management help us to maintain information about entities such as account name, passwords, profiles, access rights, many other things. So implementing a management process is crucial because digital entities are becoming more and more in use and affect a wide range of system, systems, both within or without the organization. So all the organizations, they need to consider identity and the context of many interactive parts that basically creates or make up the whole. For example, a user may have sort of credential for accessing a customer records database. But what about the accessing an archival database? Do we need to give them different type of credentials? Or maybe another system, if they need to access another system, do we need to give them other type of credentials? So common identity management tasks basically include, if you look at on the slides, assigning and changing user access, you know, resetting user passwords, tracking user activities, creating and deprovisioning IDs, synchronizing multiple identities, enforcing pilot policies, and maintaining compliance, obviously, those are the big ones. Now, identity management process, there are three steps in the process of identity management. Identification, basically creating a unique identity. Authentication, providing the person is basically who they say they are. They need to let us, show us an authorization, providing access to allow resources. So there are three steps involved in any type of identity management. Now, for identification, identification to be useful, its identity must be unique. That's, you know, a given. Using guest as an identification obviously is not appropriate, is not recommended, it's highly frowned upon. So, because impossible, it is not possible to identify, it's impossible to, to know who the guest is. So an identification is often claimed by entering a user ID during the login function or by presenting an identity card or a little token or something like this. Now, along with the different identification types comes some weaknesses, obviously. As you can see here on this slide, you know, ID cards obviously can be copied or recreated. User IDs subject to attacks such as social engineering, that's really big these days. Email addresses, obviously, not technical restriction prevents someone from using another person's email address. And you can see the rest of this stuff, what kind of weaknesses they have, you know. So when it comes to authentication type, now, once an identity has been claimed, then the subject required to prove that their identity through some kind of authentication method. So this is actually a very important step because information used to, for authentication is typically protected because the identification component must be commonly known, you know. So the method to use the authenticating or identifying broken down in three different areas. Actually, four different, well, three, three different areas, I can, I can kind of argue about the somewhere you, you are. So the three main areas is something you know, something you have and something you are. But somewhere you are that can be added to later on, but, but most organization, that these are the three areas that they're gonna look at. Something you know, something you have and something you are. So something you know as authentication by knowledge, basically, it's an authentication factor includes that the use of a password or other piece of information that only a user knows or remembers. So an individual assigned a user ID normally established their passwords in the system at the beginning one, as a part of the, basically the process, authentication process. So, and the passwords are properly protected and encrypted most of the time, hopefully all the time. And it's normally something that you know, some, this is one of the simplest authentication method when it comes to authenticate. Now, there are several type of passwords that they can be used when it comes to something, you know, authentication is the password, passphrases, PIN or graphical passwords, if you know. Now, obviously, the complexity of password is really important. So the type of policies that we set for the length of the password and complexity is really important. Also, password should be changed frequently, you know, some organizations passwords are changed every six months or every year, some organization on a weekly basis depend on how sensitive their data is. But it has to be some kind of policy for changing passwords. And also, we wanna make sure that the users, they protect their passwords. You cannot imagine back in the day, again, when I was doing consulting, how many times I went sat in front of a computer and I saw somebody put their passwords on a post-it note under their keyboard or on their monitor. So we wanna make sure that people, people, they understand that they have to protect their passwords. Now, in something you have authentication method, it's basically, you, you possess a physical device or something to provide authentication. You know, these devices, they can be RFID's, you know, identification card or radio frequency identification cards, token devices, even mobile phones these days, you know, when it can be used as something you have. One potential downside to this is the theft of that device, obviously, if somebody steals that RFID, you know, they can use it. So again, this is one of the downside of it, but it's another things to look at. Now, when we look at the, this table, it lists some of the devices that basically enable something you have authentication. Magnetic strip cards to store authentication data on a strip, strip of magnetized metal that is swiped through the magnetic reader. And the problem with that is that they can easily be duplicated. So it's kind of being phased out, you see less and less companies using the magnetized or magnetic strip cards. Everything is moving to the chips these days or a smart card. So now we get to some, somewhere you are, so authentication, you know, I'm sorry, this, this title is wrong, is not somewhere you are, actually is something you are. So this title is wrong, so there's something you are. This basically points to the attributes like a fingerprint, retina scans, iris scans, facial recognition and voice recognition. Now, there are obviously types of biometric devices that it can be used, you know, that you can see, these are some samples of them, there are a lot more things out there. Fingerprint, iris scan, retina scan, facial recognition, voice print, keystroke recognition and touchscreen movements. Those are some of the devices that can be used for biometric devices. When it comes to acceptance, obviously, some measurements are accepted these days everywhere, fingerprints, voice analysis, facial recognition. And there are some concerns when it comes to certain, you know, certain biometrics, obviously. There are invasion of civil liberties, difficulty of a scanner, sanitation, health concerns, especially these days with pandemic and what's happening in the world. And then if system, all system fails, then what we're gonna do, so we need to be able to make sure that we test. Now, when it comes to authentication, obviously, multi-factor authentication is where more than one type of authentication is being used in accessing a system or facilities. This is highly recommended these days to implement in our environment. Even though you're gonna get some pushback because people, they don't like to spend couple of seconds to do the second authentication. But it's, it's one of the safest way of doing it as far as it comes. Now, using a fingerprint scanner device with a PIN, you know, that's one way of doing it. And another way is just typing your password and getting code on your mobile device. That's another way of doing multi-factor authentication. So again, it's something that really think about if, if you are in charge of writing policies and, and working on authentication methods or, or rules when it comes to certain things, especially when people accessing sensitive data. Now, accountability is a concept of determining what entity can be held responsible for what action because we know things can happen. So this is basically similar to non-repudiation, which ensures that entities cannot deny having performed a certain actions. Now, the following processes or the processes that you see on the screen are integral for accountability to be useful to an organization. So obviously, identification must be, must support the ability to tie an action back to an entity's. Authentication, obviously, needs to be strong enough. Training and awareness must be available and mandated for all users. And continuous monitoring of sorry, let me see, continuous monitoring, obviously, we wanna make sure that we monitor all the activities and we can verify account abusers or, so we can keep them accountable. Auditing logs, as I said, throughout the session auditing is really important. Especially when it comes to logs, we have to keep record of all the actions and make sure we be able to trace it back to the users. And then policies, we need to support accountability so that implementation is consistent and fair. Now, we got a couple more slides to go, the session management, this is another way of looking at, you know, some kind of controlling the identification or authentication is basically how a single instance of identification or authentication is applied to a resource or group of resources, like an operating system desktop. Now, typically, when the identification and authentication process is complete and that individual or the entity has been authorized, the result is a session, this is where a session created. So in most cases, once the permissions rights have been established, they won't change for duration of that session, so they have access to whatever they need to during that session. But user can initiate one desktop session and maintain it while starting up and a completely different desktop session. So there are no, number of ways of controlling desktop session, including through screensavers. The original function of the screensaver is basically no longer applies to the modern LCD, but it can be used to lock a desktop session. You know, back in the day when they created the screen server, it was because of the markers that it would put on the monitors. But this is, we use it for locking a session. And also, if the, the user is not active on the session, we can set up automatically to log him off and lock him. So there are some restrictions that we can set up when it comes to session management. Now, in order for an organization to create an identity for an individual, especially an electronic identity, the organization will often need to initiate a process for actually proving that this person should be attached to this entity or organization or process. So this comes before the identity is actually created because the organization need to be absolutely sure that this individual is who they claim to be. So the process of proving and registering an identity may include, you know, an in-person interview, face-to-face verification of the driver license or other picture ID, you know, and other, other steps that you can see on the slides, like checking the fingerprint history and other, other steps that you can see on the slides, like checking the fingerprint history and so on, depending on what type of the security and for our sensitive information they have access to and what kind of access we wanna provide them. So this basically the end of this webinar. Again, as I said, this was a thirty thousand foot overview of some of the domains that is covered in CISSP. I have, I don't know if William is available, Jesse William is not available right now, I see.
No, he had to step away, but we'll go ahead and field some of the questions about our content. Myself, I'm the marketing manager for New Horizons at NH DoD, so you see our social media up on the screen right now. A lot of you that are joined, that have joined us on Facebook have already been admitted to the decertification study group where we do pretty much monthly, if not quarterly, study sessions like this specifically for DoD-related content geared towards security, such as what just Sean did, which was that, you know, thirty thousand foot overview we've done, SY501, Security Plus, Tips and Tricks. Basically, everything you could get to prepare for that exam coming up in the new year, we have some more deep dives into CISSP with some of our instructors and we'll be doing more in the DoD certification study group to really help us all keep our tools sharp for working in security and achieving those certifications for NH DoD. If you want more information about our company for NH DoD, it's the website simple, it's NHDoD.com, NHDoD.com, and you'll be able to find all the contacts and your representatives and liaisons in the territories that you serve.